The time is now seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Adequate notice of tonight's meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by the following methods. Distribution of notice to the record, posting of agenda on the school district website, and through Parent Square. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Thomasovich, can you give your vote, please?
Ms. Choi? Mr. Graff? Dr. Misa? Ms. Molina? Mr. Parr? Here. Ms. Zepka? Ms. Segal? Ms. Thompson? Vice President Melman? And President Lee?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. And please let the record reflect that Mr. Segal contacted me earlier and couldn't make it for personal reasons tonight.
And also in attendance is our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, soon to be Acting Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Caramanos, as well as our Board Attorney, Mr. Lepara, and our two student reps, Ms. Ahm and Ms. Kim.
Thank you. That brings us to item 1.4 on the agenda, Public Comments Regarding Agenda Items. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please step up, provide your name and address. Not everyone at once, please.
Arthur's Day at 1:25 relative. I'm not as prepared as I'd like to because I got hijacked today by my wife. Some of you may know how that goes. You know, you're, honey, can we do this? And you, you know, you usually know when it's coming, so you can avoid it, but I got trapped today and deeked. And so, yeah, I went and then, you know, once you're there, it's like, well, while we're here, you think we can go here, you know, and then another place. And so meanwhile, you know, five and a half, six hours later, I'm rushing back and I said, is that? That's okay. She doesn't watch anyhow. Tell her to watch. She never watches. Anyhow, so I rushed back and I did it. So I've got a few things to go over. She cut me off and I'll do the second half later on if you want. I had a question about the cameras on the buses, but then I went through some of the bills and I saw that we actually do have a bill for Wi-Fi, if I'm not mistaken, on the buses. So the question I have regarding that, and I'm good, is that live stream or live monitor being someone watching cameras? Or is it blind? Does it just go to recording even if there's an incident? And when does that, when is that going to happen? Or is it already happening? I think it's a good idea to have cameras on the, and also do we have a GPS on the buses? Do we know where they are, how fast they're going? I had a Leonia Schools bus flying by me one, this past week. I didn't get the bus number, but it was definitely traveling too fast. If you had GPS on, you would have seen that. I have a question on a few things. One on bills. This is AI tool brisk, Brisk Labs for $10,000. I don't know what that's about. Why we're paying $10,000 or by misunderstanding it. So I'd like an explanation for that. Cornerstone Day Schools, it was $9,000. I don't know what that's for. Is that for a particular student or not? Or is that just something else? The Human Resources Officer, it's nothing to do with the person. It's a matter, the question is, is it a new position, an add-on, or is it a replacement? If it's new, why? If it's an add-on, why could we not have done without it and save the $77,000 plus benefit salary? But it has nothing to do with the person. I don't know the person. I'm sure they're involved by doing that particular job. Under tuition rates, the question is, these are monies that we collect from the people that attend, for example, preschool for an autism student would be rate is $29,000 and the estimated tuition. I'm not picking on that one. I'm just saying that whole list of that list, money that we collect from people that that just happens to be the first one on it. Or is that money that we have to pay instead of our kids sometimes? There's a question on that. Under bills, also there's, I'm sorry, I'll turn that off. There's a bunch of people going for personal advancement to NJTESOL. I don't know what that is. I'd like an explanation of what that is and what the benefit to the attendees is going to be. It's only $390 a person, but there's about eight or nine of them. Just want to know what the benefit would be. Compliment, a little house under, under generating revenue. I noticed that we're collecting $74,000 from the use of the Little Theater on Sundays. It's not a matter of, not a matter of renting it, just empty space, dead space, and returning it to cash. That's a great idea. And custodians, another $52,000. That's a lot of money to collect and somebody can use that space on great. So the public needs to know that they are, you know, we are trying to offset some of the expenses. Change Order One of the bills, classroom renovations, says there was a nine, $8,700 change order additional. I'd like to know what that was for. Another thing. Find it and then I'll sit down. Oh, Public Service Announcements. As I had mentioned in the past, I object going over. We have to do it, but I'd like to see a group of people go and approach the county or the state and see the change. Tuition for Bergen Academies, for private school in my opinion. The school's fine. It's wonderful. Wonderful to have that available to go out, but I think it should be tuition based. I sent my kids to private school. It was tuition based. Holy Angels was fine. I had to pay for it. I didn't get taxpayers of Leonia in general to subsidize my expense to go to Holy Angels. This is a private for a good setup. I know it's county, but it's private. We're paying $44,000. I don't know if it's monthly or not, or that's just for the semester, but a lot of money. And we as taxpayers are subsidizing somebody who's in their kids, nine, eight, whatever they are. And I'm not criticizing the kids. They're right kids. They got in. I'm complaining about the cost. And I know we have to do it, but I think we should make a committee and go and approach it. That is all. Thank you for being present.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Okay, that brings us to the next item, Board Comments. Any comments from board members or our student representatives on any agenda related items?
So I'm going to answer some of your questions, then I'm going to pass it to Eric to answer some of your questions as well. So the cameras on the buses, we do, the Wi-Fi is live. So we don't have someone actually sitting there the entire time the buses are out watching, but it is live streaming if we do need to look into where the buses are. Right. And it's recorded, right? So we can always go back. And we do have GPS on the bus. The bills list for AI tools for Brisk Labs, that is an AI tool that our district has, so all staff in the district have access to it. It is a tool that supports students and teachers, so it gives students immediate feedback as they're writing, like it'll help them and support them, and it'll help the, it helps the teachers, you know, kind of support the students a little bit better. It helps develop assignments. It helps give them, it gives them tips to support the students. So it'll say like, you know, this student should work on this, or this student needs help here. And so it's just an AI tool that supports and it's accessed, all of our teachers and students can access it across the district. HR Officer. HR Officer is not a new position. We've had that position in the district for a few years now. That is our, our last person that was in the position resigned, so this is a new hire for the position. It was a new position a few years ago. It was with all of the state regulations and all the state requirements that are changing. The position is just, it's a very important position for the district. We report a lot of information to the state and that person really makes sure that all the information we're reporting is accurate when it comes to any type of human resource reporting. NJTSOL, that's for, it's the New Jersey Teachers of English to speak other languages, and our teachers are attending that. So our ESL teachers, so our teachers who actually teach students, our multilingual students, as well as one teacher per department is going to, it's basically a conference where they'll learn about ways to support our bilingual and our multilingual learners. And then Eric, do you have your?
To piggyback off of what Dr. Caramano said relating to the cameras, it is live monitoring, which also records GPS. It also tracks speed, location, all that. But the main objective of the cameras wasn't GPS. We already had GPS installed on the buses, but we can do live monitoring, but the cameras are constantly recording. So at any time, we could always, you know, upload that data and retrieve data that has happened already. Relating to the cornerstone day school, that 9,000 is a tuition at a district student. That's a tuition cost for a student we're sending, you know, a placement relating to a student that was placed out of district. Relating to the tuition rates, those are rates that we charge other LEAs or could be a parent paid for a student that's coming into the district. So those are rates based on the most recent certified rate that was, that was released a couple of weeks ago. So I basically take that number, we utilize that data, and that always gets trued up two years later. So that's, so basically the 25, 26 rate will get reconciled in 27, 28. Relating to the use of facilities, the 74,000 roughly and the 52,000, those rates are in accordance with our district policy for use of facilities. So that's in accordance with that policy. For the custodial, that's basically to offset the cost of paying the custodian that needs to be on site because the building is occupied. So that's kind of going directly tied to the additional overtime. Relating to the 74,000, that money goes back into the budget. It's, you know, for improvements, capital items to offset taxes, you know, for the residents of Leonia. And obviously, the more use the facility is occupied, the more maintenance is, you know, needed to maintain that building. For the, the change order relating to that 8,700, I believe that's for the core project. That was for additional work that was needed that wasn't quoted by the vendor who's doing the project. That was a small item that I believe there was some type of masonry work that, based on the design, that was kind of not originally quoted. And once we reviewed it with the architect, it was deemed to be additional work that we needed to approve that wasn't previously approved. It wasn't through a bid or anything like that. It was a local co-op, so it wasn't something that the vendor should have known, or, you know, there's a, it could raise any, any lowest bid compliance. So we went through a local cooperative and relating to the tuition for Bergen Academies, that is, that 40-something thousand is, I believe, a monthly amount. That's roughly the monthly amount. I believe we have roughly 33 students that are going out of district from nine through 12. So, I mean, you know, we get that data and I'm doing the current budget for next year, so that data hasn't been released yet for next year. But that's something that those students, like I always say, they're not on ASSA as resident students, so they're not included in our state aid count. But there is an expense that the state requires us to pay over to, you know, Bergen County Academies and VOTA. And I believe that was all your questions.
That brings us to item 1.6, Public Presentations. I know we've moved past public comments, but I was curious if maybe we'd like to, if the board would be okay with me opening public comment back up? Okay. Name and address, please.
Just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Caramanos for stepping up yet again. The district is very lucky to have you and we're in good hands knowing that we're, that you're stepping up yet again. So, thank you. And the other thing is that I am previously an Edgewater Revend member, and we don't take things that seriously sometimes in Edgewater. So last time, I think I sent you guys pizza one time. That was when I was a board member. We were here till really, really late. So today is actually our board member's birthday, so I wanted to come and make sure you all got to celebrate with her. And she is my best friend, so I'm allowed to do this, but she will hate me forever. Hope you guys have a great meeting.
This is going on Facebook.
You could imagine.
I was scared he was going to show up like this. Absolutely not. I'm going to embarrass the
Christina, thank you so much and happy birthday, Laurie.
Thank you, Christina, for the kind words. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, back to our regular schedule.
Thank you.
So we are on item 1.6 of the agenda, Public Presentations. We actually have two listed on the agenda. We were actually going to postpone the Board of Education Ethics Training. That will most likely be occurring on March 11.
Sure. So I am here to the student safety reporting that we do, Student Safety Data System. It's the SSVS. That's what FSDS stands for. So what I do tonight is I just report out what we've reported to the state from the reporting period of September to January. So from September 1st to January 30 or 31st, what we reported in terms of incidents of violence, vandalism, and HIB, and confirmed HIB. So for the first reporting period, we had zero incidents at ACS. We had 14 incidents at the middle school. Out of the 14, five were violence, one was vandalism, and one was confirmed HIB. And then two incidents at the high school, and the two incidents at the high school were confirmed HIB. In response to that, we have been increasing our, our HIB programs and trainings that we've been doing for our staff and for our students. District-wide, we've had two trainings that we've done. ACS has had five trainings. LMS has had three trainings and has, has, have been doing two programs for students. LHS has had two trainings, and then they have had six programs for students. So that's where, that's our reporting for the first period of the year. And then sometime in June, towards the end of June, we'll report out from the second reporting period, so from February 1st to June 30th.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? I have one quick question. I don't know if you have the answer. I'm just curious if you know, like how those, and that's just for the school year up till, like, December 3rd. Do you know how that compares to like prior years? I know when I got back from COVID, there was, important, like numbers were good, just curious.
So ACS has, there's no real change at ACS. We have seen a decrease at the high school, and then the middle school, a slight decrease in the middle school. But, you know, we're still ramping up some of those HIB trainings and programs. You know, in some of my board reports, from the board report today, I'll share some of the things that we've done at the middle school and the high school.
Thank you. I know it's, I mean, kids are going to be kids, but we do the best that we can to support. So thank you. It's good to hear the decrease. Brings us to item 2.1, Student Representative Comments. Student reps, what from the board tonight? And that brings us to item 3.1, Approval, Approval of Consent Agenda Items. Can I have a motion and a second? Motion, Mr. Graff, second, Mr. Zepka? Do any board members have any items that they'd like to have pulled for discussion from the consent agenda? Okay, see none. Can I have your vote, please?
Ms. Chow? No, I'm sorry. Ms. Choi?
Yes, it's for the last
Mr. Graff? Dr. Misa? Ms. Molina? Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Ms. Zepka? Ms. Thompson?
Yeah.
Vice President Melman? And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on consenting agenda items.
Thank you. And that brings us to Administrative Reports. Dr. Caramo?
Okay, so before I start the report, I just wanted to just, as you know, Dr. Misa will be out for the next few months. So, and I'm positive that he's watching tonight, so I just wanted to wish him on behalf of the district and behalf of speaking for the Board of Ed, you know, we wish him a speedy recovery, and that we'll hold down the fort here while he recovers from his injury, but he has to take his time and recover. Wish him the best recovery. So going into the report, a few things to share. Last week, ACS was World Read Allowed Day. So students at ACS were, spent the day listening to read alouds from different people, authors. Mr. Thomasovich and I also did a read aloud, which was great. I've got to kick out of it. So it was a fun day for ACS. Read Across America is coming up. It's March 3rd to 7th. I do know ACS was asking for parent volunteers and signups for parents to come visit the classrooms and read to the classes. So there was a parent, Parent Square posted on that recently. LMS Advisory recently launched their eighth grade mentoring program a few weeks ago. So eighth grade students are working with fifth and sixth graders on decision-making and how their decisions impact others. So it's a new program for our eighth graders at LMS. It's a stepping stone to the pure leadership and then bringing that over to the high school eventually. Then at LHS, we had Jordan Toma visit our ninth graders last week. Jordan Toma, also known as I'm Just A Kid With An IEP. You know, if you saw the Instagram post last night, but he shared with our ninth graders how he turned his struggle into his strength and how he overcame adversity. We did an assembly for our ninth graders. It was, it was great. The kids loved it. You know, there was a lot of, a lot of engagement. You know, he was great. And he will be coming back to do the same, a similar presentation to our staff at our opening day, so we just booked that today. The athletic update, because we are full swing into the athletic season, so a few things before we, before I go up to, into upcoming events. So first, girls' basketball. Our girls' basketball are currently 14 and eight and undefeated in divisional play. They won their second consecutive NJIC Liberty Division title. Junior Angelica Doe scored her 1,000th career point on January 30th versus Elmwood Park. And sophomore Danny DeProza is 29 points away from her 1,000th point. Danny was named Athlete of the Week by the Bergen Record, and the state tournament begins on February 27th. So keep an eye out for those dates three times. Boys' basketball is currently 7 and 14, but they had some really impressive wins over Secaucus, Butler, Waldwick, and Saddle Brook, and their state tournament also begins on the 27th. Wrestling is currently 11 and 4. They qualified for the first round of the state tournament. Junior Gabe Jang finished second in his weight class at the Bergen County Tournament. He's overall 21 and 1 this season. And then the district wrestling tournament will take place on February 22nd, Passack Valley High School. Bowling finished the regular season with a record of 12 and 4, defeated Riverdale in the first round of the state tournament, and will take on Dumont in the round two, which is this week, right? Thursday? Yes, Thursday. We have a bowler here. And finished third overall at the Bergen County Invitational Tournament. And then swimming, so our girls' swimming team won their 11th consecutive NJIC Conference Title, and our boys won their first NJIC Conference Title since 2020. The girls, the boys and girls took first place in the NJIC Conference Championship Meet, and they're both going to advance to the quarterfinals of the state tournament. The girls took sixth overall in the Bergen County Tournament, and the boys finished 10th overall. And then finally, our track, our indoor track is based on individual student entry, so we don't have a full team. We just enter students into races. Dominique Cameron was the NJIC League Champion in the 3200. Dominique was crowned North One Group Two State Sectional Champion in the 3200. The Bousa Kazuki finished fifth overall in the 400, and Calvin Dow finished sixth overall. So Dominique, Tabusa, and Calvin will advance to the state group meet that's being held at the Bennett Center in my hometown of Tom's River on February 22nd. And finally, that's it for athletics, but then upcoming events pending, no weather changes. We have the 100th Day of School on Friday, so big day for us here. 100 days, we made it, and there's 83 days left, 82 days left. And then the ACS Talent Show is on Thursday. I'll be there emceeing with Ms. Nera, so hopefully we'll all come back well. And then March 4th is the Home and School Harlem Wizards event. So if you haven't gotten your tickets, definitely get your tickets. We've heard that tickets are selling fast. And then Card Party, March 14th, so it's save the date if you don't already have it saved. Class of 2025, Card Party, that's their biggest fundraiser of the year, so definitely spread the word.
Thank you. Mr. Thomasovich?
Thank you, President Lee. So I was just, I'm happy to report that the district had two successful bid openings. One was relating to our EV bus lease, which we're leasing the difference of what the grant is not covering, which is roughly a little over $800,000. So we had three, three bids. The lowest bidder came in at 4.10% interest rate. So that's being in the process of, it actually has been reviewed by Mr. Lepara as well as our lease consultants. So we're in the process of submitting that form into the board for approval and moving forward with the closing documents on that project. The next bid was relating to our interior renovations at LHS, which we bundled three projects together. One was the media center. The other project was the weight room slash fitness center, and the other project was, the last project was the art room renovations relating to the sink replacements that were damaged by the flooding relating to our August rainstorm. So the first one, the media center, there was also three bids that came in for that project. The lowest bidder, the potential lowest bidder came under the projected construction cost by 120,000. So that's great news. The weight room and the fitness center, there was also three bids that were returned for that project. The lowest bidder was slightly over the projected construction cost by 12,000, which will utilize some of that additional funding for some of the closed projects that were on the budget. And the last project was the art room renovations, which we didn't have a, an exact budget because that's going through insurance. So that's in the process of being reviewed and approved by insurance. Once we, we confirm all those projects, really the key thing is the insurance approval because they were all bundled together. Once we decide if insurance is going to move forward with the art room renovations, then that'll determine how the bids are going to be awarded with the other two projects. So that currently, we're waiting for our insurance to come back on that with the anticipating closeout to be submitted to the board on March 11th for the final approval. So I'd like to thank Mr. Lepara for his work in reviewing these projects as well as our architect and making sure everything's in complying with the bid laws. The last thing, I'd just like to thank Ms. Cop, my admin assistant, and all the board members in trying to get their financial disclosures forms in by the required date. Mr. Graff, thank you for getting it in within the 30-day time period. Thank you for that work. And the budget, the last piece is the budget is moving along. So far, you know, with the, with the certified rates, with the, you know, projected costs, I mean, it's, we're in the, kind of the same boat as last year with special ed cost increase and with health benefit costs coming back from our insurance broker, roughly around 14%. They're projecting out the budget with anticipated increase from the state. General liability insurance, they're, you know, they're projecting out Would anticipate an increase from the state. General liability insurance, they're, you know, they're projecting out, you know, budgeting around 8%. So we're still in these high percentage increases relating to our overall, you know, these, these, I guess statutory expenses that we kind of, you know, have to kind of work with. The district did look into kind of privatizing our, our health insurance, which we did not get any potential private carriers to, to submit an RFP based on our claim loss ratio. So we're kind of, you know, we're always looking at ways to kind of save money and, and, you know, save the taxpayer dollars. But as of right now, we're kind of in the same, same predicament as prior year with, you know, potential state aid decreases. We don't know what's going to happen with federal grants, IDA, which we kind of offset some of that special ed costs every year, some of that tuition out of district as well as our ESU grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. So there's a lot of unknowns. Hopefully with, you know, with the, the governor's address, end of the month, we'll have a better idea as far as, you know, what we're looking at for those state aid and federal grants. But it's moving along. We have a meeting set up internally with myself and Exanthe to kind of go over that, the budget recap. And then I believe we have a finance meeting on the calendar for the following week.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item six, committee reports, starting with our student representatives.
Hi, we just want to reiterate the importance of the Card Party for the graduating class. It is our biggest fundraiser and probably pays for our trip to Dorney Park. So we'd really appreciate if people of the public and like family and friends can buy tickets even if they can't come and to hopefully win some great prizes. We wanted to say that spring sports athletic registration has opened for girls' and boys' track, boys' volleyball, baseball, softball, girls' flag football and boys' tennis. And we want to kind of, no doubt there that boys' volleyball is a new sport this year, so we're very excited and so is girls' flag football. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's good to hear. I saw the boys' volleyball club at the beginning of the year, so it's good to see that they actually got it, could have turned into a full sport. A very important announcement in terms of the spring sports, make sure you get your medical forms completed so that you do not miss out on the opportunity to participate. Thank you. Okay, our next committee, Board of Ed Practices and Principles?
Yeah, we had a good meeting on February 4th. We're also talking about strategic planning during these meeting times. So we did discuss Vic doing the ethics training, I believe at the next meeting. And then we are discussing the CSA evaluation, even with Brian's retirement, we will be completing and going through that process as a board. It's still important for us to go through that process. And then Zanthe did a great job of sharing the strategic planning admin notes with the group. She kind of went through all the different goals that the strategic planning is including. So I think our committee is excited to continue to get updates at each of our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to hear about strategic planning. So Mr. Zepka, children's and grounds?
Um, yes, we have yet to meet, but we're going to meet next Friday.
Thank you. And education?
We'll be meeting later. That's my thought.
Trying to have some planning as myself. We are, as Mr. Thomassevich mentioned, we are trying to schedule for the 19th through the 20th so we can review the budget before it's presented to the full board. And finally, policy, that is Mr. Sagel, who is off tonight. We do, we're scheduling a meeting for that as well. I think that's Friday. Okay, busy Friday. I'm going to skip over new business and go to public comment. We can actually, yeah, well, so the next agenda item for the public is item number 10, new business. This is all personnel related. Can I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second, through, second, Mr. Park. Can we have roll call please?
Ms. Choi? Ms. DeGrau? Dr. Misa?
Yeah.
Ms. Molina?
Yeah.
Ms. DeParr?
Yes.
Ms. Zepka?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah.
Vice President Melman? And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on new business.
Thank you. That brings us to our second public comment period on any school-related matter. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please step up to the podium, provide your name and address. You'll have two minutes to speak.
Hello. Robin Plattis Moore, 212 Warwick Lane, New Jersey. I had three questions actually. One, I received the survey from Parent League about the gifted and talented program. I didn't think we had one. I know that there was one at some point, but I thought it was done away with. So I'm not too sure I had answered the survey unless I'm missing something. The other thing is class ranks. Was that done away with also at the high school? Class rankings? It was. Is there a reason? So that's the other thing. And then, hopefully this is down the road, but if we lose federal funding, how are we going to be and what plans are in place?
Thank you very much. We'll answer your questions after we get through the public comment period.
Agging onto what Robin brought up, it's actually a comment for Eric, considering the potential for the loss of federal funding. I know you're trying to keep around 10% collective reserve, around $4 million plus or minus. Is there any retiring debt that's coming up that we could probably pocket unless you had earmarked that for new projects? Are there any new projects coming up that might be debatable should the funding, you know, grants be canceled or whatever? So rather than shocking everybody through no fault of anybody other than the fact that the government is changing, what convention plans have you been thinking about? I know you don't have any for sure, but what are you thinking?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public, please?
Jordan Ziegler, 201 Christie Street, also your Board of Ed liaison from the Mayor Council. On behalf of the Mayor Council, we're wishing Dr. Gate in a very speedy recovery. We're also, we'd like to offer our condolences for the loss of Mrs. Carol Adelstein, who I understand passed away over the weekend. I had Mrs. Adelstein as a fifth grade teacher. Very difficult loss for me. I think she honestly was one of the best teachers I had in my time in the county school district. Really did prepare me for middle school and life ahead. And also happy birthday, Lori.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to board comments.
Thank you for bringing that up, Jordan, about Mrs. Carol Adelstein. Yes, she did recently pass away. You know, our hearts were out to the ACS family. A lot of people, you know, had a really good relationship with her and still kept in touch with her after her retirement. I got to spend a few months with her. Actually, I met her when I was supervisor in Edgewater. I got to work with her on our Edgewater, the New York Summits. That's where I really got to know her and know her, just great knowledge of education and math, specifically math instruction. And she would definitely be missed. To answer some of the other questions, the gifted and talented survey, so thank you for bringing that up, but I actually should have probably reminded everyone in my survey. So the fact that you thought it was gone away, that's a great reason why you should fill out that survey to give us that feedback. Yes. Yes, please. That, so, you know, we're collecting, one of the things that came from the board goals, the district goals and through strategic planning was really looking at our different programs that we provide. And one of those programs is what we provide for our gifted and for our academically advanced students. So we're definitely collecting that feedback so we can get a better picture of the, so we're collecting feedback from the community. We're also collecting feedback from staff and from the board to get a better understanding of the perception of what our gifted programs are like out there and then we can rebuild internally. We did do away with class rank. It was a long discussion and process and research. It was last, last school year through the Board of Education, Education Committee. And we talked a lot about, we did, we talked a lot about the impact of class rank. We found that colleges no longer look at class rank. They don't use it as part of the admissions process. And we felt that they, the colleges consider other factors like academic coursework, extracurricular activities, leadership qualities and personal character. So the weighing the stress of class rank versus, you know, the, the lack of benefit it is to, there, there was no benefit to college. Colleges weren't looking at it. Students weren't benefiting from having it. So we ultimately, through a long conversation and collaboration with our administrators and the Board of Education, we removed it. That was effective this school year. Federal funding?
Thank you, Robin, and Arthur relating to federal funding. That's a great question. As of right now, I mean, we don't have any large items coming off the books next year. After next year, we do have a large lease that's coming off. It's about 350,000. But because it's a capital item, infrastructure, I'm able to utilize capital reserve. So it's really not, even with that coming off, it's not a reduction in taxes per se, because I utilize that reserve balance to kind of offset that lease. As of right now, I mean, the, the information we're receiving from the county through the state, you know, state through the county, is that, you know, the grants, they kind of anticipate grant funding is going to be similar to what you have received previously. There's no new information. As far as like the Title I's, Title II's, Title III's, I know Exanthe does a great job when she does the, the grant application and supplementing a lot of programs that is not, you know, we don't, we're not tying up items that we need to grant for. I mean, this is adding PD, it's adding resources that enhance the school. So I mean, that's an area where, you know, that might have to be either decreased or funds might be moved in other lines to kind of offset that need. The biggest thing is special ed because from doing the budget, I mean, every year special ed, it keeps going up based on amount of students, either getting placed out of district because of the need, based on the resources, even with special ed students in district to support that need that, you know, those students need to get a free education. So those costs constantly are increasing. So one of the grant that we do utilize to supplement that, that overall cost is IDA, which is roughly about 350,000 per se. So I mean, it's a large amount. I mean, I historically budget typically about 75 to 80% of the current grant award for like a decrease. So if we get more funding, it benefits, you know, the district, but to reduce it completely, you know, that is an, an item where it'll be a little bit tough to kind of figure out, you know, as far as what the district needs to do without kind of going into a cut as far as, you know, salaries and reducing other expenses.
Just to add to that, similarly to what we're doing with gifted and talented, part of strategic planning is looking at all of our programs. So part of that will be looking at our special ed programs and what we, what we're spending sending out students, what we can bring in, back into the district. So that'll be a review and an analysis in the next year through our strategic planning process.
Thank you. Definitely not a, a fun thought to think of if we were to lose federal funding, but it'll be something that obviously we'll take a close look at as it continues to develop. If it, if it develops further, as well as things like the DOE being dismantled and things of that nature. So we will be looking at that closely. I mean, we are a local board, so we're impacted by the decision on the state, county, state, federal level, but we'll navigate the best we can. In terms of other board comments, I did want to make a comment about the Card Party for the public. If you haven't been there, if you want a, an event where you can, without guilt, spend money. This is the event to do it. It is an absolutely worthy cause. It's a great event for the seniors. You can win yourself some prizes too. So come with some food and be prepared with your wallets and your checkbooks for a chance to win a good, good prize or nice prizes for a great cause. So definitely, if you have the time, please, please make an attempt to come out. 14, March 14th. And we are coming up on the agenda on executive session, which we do have to have an executive session. I'm not kicking everyone out just yet. I did want to mention, obvious, Dr. Karamanos mentioned it earlier, Brian's medical leave for the fall that he had during the LMS Talent Show. Definitely disappointed that he can't be here, that coupled with his upcoming retirement. And the subject of the closed session, we'll, we'll be discussing in depth the next steps for our superintendent search. We are in the process of selecting a search firm. Once we have that search firm selected, we will go with advertisements for positions or for the position. Once those, once resumes are received, those will be screened and then we'll go through an in-depth selection process. Currently, the intent is to go with the same superintendent profile that we did just two years ago. Having, that having been so recent, we really didn't feel like there was the need to revise that. Brian has been extremely successful in his short term here. We're, we're very happy with the performance that he had. We hope to find someone that can fill his big shoes. We have great intern help right now in Dr. Karamanos and we're very happy to have her, her supporting us through this. I'm very fortunate to have her supporting us through this. So that will be essentially the majority of the closed session discussions. We do have other matters to review as well. We expect to be in closed session for, for quite a long time. If you do want to wait around on YouTube, I think at an hour at least. At least an hour of discussion and deliberation, after which time we'll come back in and we will take our final vote on personnel and then close the meeting. At this time, can I have a motion to go into closed session? Thompson, one second. Mr. Park, all in favor? Any opposed or objections? Okay, motion carries. We are in closed session at 7:47 PM. For those of you watching on YouTube, thank you for watching. We'll be back in about an hour.
Ms. Choi? Ms. DeGrau?
Yes.
Dr. Misa?
Yes.
Ms. Molina?
Yeah.
Ms. DeParr?
Yes.
Ms. Zepka?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah.
Vice President Melman?
Yeah.
And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on personnel.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for German? Mr. Park, second. Ms. Thompson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or objections? Okay, you're German. Thank you very much.